All right, it is seven oh two, time to call this meeting to work. Everyone, please take the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Coleman, if you'd lead us in tonight's opening prayer.
Dear God, tonight we ask for wisdom and guidance with making decisions for Nelsonville. Also, in Jesus' name, I'd like to request a moment of silence for those suffering from the earthquake. Amen.
Amen. Call a room man.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Dunphy.
Here.
Mr. Sherman.
Yeah.
A motion to excuse Mr. Smith due to family illness from tonight's meeting, second.
Missing Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Okay, here we have a application from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a business double J and H LLC at nine seventy-one Chestnut Street. If anyone on council has an issue with that, so to speak.
What's it for?
Liquor license.
J and H.
Double J and H LLC.
It's a residential house. All right, it's a zone for.
I don't know.
I don't either.
That's they just sent them.
They just sent them.
And then. If if council wants that, a hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
They need to let us know, otherwise we're just telling you don't need to go.
Well, I mean, it's residential, I don't understand. Was it a bar there? It's across from Spencer's house. Or it's across from Spencer's garage, or. It's a total residential house.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's the yellow house.
Yeah, right across from Spencer's garage.
Yeah, I think we probably better have a meeting to discuss that.
Would we add it to Wednesday night committee meeting?
Sure.
Well, I need to let them know today if they want if you want the hearing or not.
Yeah, we can discuss that. That'd be a perfect one to discuss.
You just even discuss it, but I'm gonna send this in.
Okay. Well.
Do you think about that?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
It's just we don't have all that law.
You want to have a hearing on it.
You want to have a hearing?
We want to have, I mean, you want to do it in half.
Yeah, it's just a residential house, I don't understand.
They can come in and talk here before we do that. Okay, all right. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting and January thirtieth special meeting? Any council discussion on said minutes? Question to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Childs.
Yes.
Okay, we're to citizens' comments. Do we have any tonight?
Come on, John Heard, another seven fifty-six Lake Hope Drive, up the street here. I'm down here by Waterville, my Waterville, and the annexing. It seems like, I don't know how it is, nobody knows, nobody can figure it out. I'm in York Township. Nobody knows why. Okay. Dale Wharton undalled this all down through here. People bought it off, built houses, started off back in the sixties. Everything out through here is in the city, but me and my sister. We're in Township. Nobody can tell me why.
I don't know why.
Nobody knows why.
I've never seen your.
Well, I think it's uh. City's responsible to find out why. This thing was supposed to be incorporated out through here. Everybody out through there, sure, Dave Lodes is in the city, but me and my sister. Okay, I'm the closest person to the water plant. And anybody ain't closer than me. And I'm getting charged a rate and a half. Water meter's been out there for twenty years. And somebody got a burr in themselves down here and committed to change the rate and a half in July. Me and my sister was discussing our water bills the first of the month. Now, her deed down there to hers is York Township, just like mine. She's paying a straight rate. I'll pay a rate and a half. I think I think my rate needs to go back down to a rate. The city needs to find out why that I'm not in Township or get me in the city like I should be. I went to the Jill Thompson, she don't know. She says she ain't got the money to research it with. She's looked at it and don't know what the problem is. The problem's somewhere in here that's been done years ago. It ain't your fault, ain't his fault, or ain't nobody's fault. This problem's been done here years ago somewhere along the line. The same thing is with the zoning out through there. That whole strip down through there. It's it's zoned industry, not housing, industry. When Mark Hall was the acting city manager here, I was building a garage down there. I got a letter from him, John, you're in violation, you ain't got no permit. I'll buy a permit to build a garage with. I'll buy a permit to build a house with. But now they say, you're in Township, John. We can't give you a fire protection, can't give you a police protection. You know, the whole city's turned around, me and my sister, three and a half acres. Something's something wrong somewhere. I think the city's responsible to find out what it is. You get it in the city where you got instead of me paying tax dollars to your accountant, pay the city where I'm at. I'm not in using the roads out there or nothing. You know, you're just, the city's just losing that money all on me and all on my sister too. So appreciate whatever you do. You want to copy this and show it's supposed to be a corporation?
You want to get in the city, so you're agreeing to an annexation, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that was, that was supposed to be years ago.
What year is this?
Did you read that right?
Sixty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, we weren't around here then.
Yeah.
All right, time to, it sounds reasonable, we need more people anyway.
Oh, yeah.
There's more people for the census, Taylor. Okay, we're trying, it's not instant, it takes about four or five months to get it done. Okay, all right.
Hey, whatever, I'd like to see the water rate for down low. Later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice one.
See you later, John.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, ma'am. State your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Cynthia Connor, I live at eight oh six Chestnut Street. I am the president of the Dog Park Committee.
Okay.
Um, I have lost a few members, so I'm just here to ask permission or some assistance for funding some new members. We're down to three, so I need to get at least a number of people, so if we could put some advertisements out.
Sure, I will.
And who I should contact, do you have my contact information too?
Give me your email address and stuff, and I'll send you the contact information for our guy who puts out our notices.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right, any business and organizational comments? No? Okay. Committee meetings will be Monday, or sorry, Wednesday night, starting at six o'clock. Every committee will have a meeting Wednesday at six, starting at six. They will, about twenty, twenty-five minute meetings, and they'll be right after, one after another. Announcement should be coming out, if it's already out, it should be out. Okay. Department updates, who do we have tonight? Jordan. Floor's yours, go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, so since the last meeting, we have still been working on rental registration. Um, I have a few that I need to get updated because I was out for a week on vacation. Um, I'd say we probably have about eighty-five percent of landlords that have paid. Um, we are now way past the deadline, so anybody that has not submitted their payment will have a hundred dollar late fee. Um, we've had a few other permits for lot splits and contractor registration along with the rental registration, but not very many. Uh, we've also started enforcing the advertisement signs. Uh, they are not allowed to be placed throughout town. They are on city property, they're obstructing view for traffic, so we are keeping those out. Um, and we are updating all of our permits on the website. A lot of them say that there is no permit fee when there really is. Um, so we've had an intern from Cap Cap that has started helping us update those. And um, by the next meeting, we should have a list of the. We have some permits that say there is a fee, but it's not listed in the code, but we have been charging for a fee. So by the next meeting, we should have a list for you guys to approve if you want to be charging those fees or not. That's it, once anybody has any questions.
I'm sorry, I don't know who you are on power enforcement.
Yeah, oh, okay, then, okay, I thought that sounded, okay.
Can we look through stuff up on the city of Nelsonville dot com?
Um, we current, the only thing we have on the website is the permits, but that's that's all we have now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, who else do we have? Chief Tolliver?
Hello, so thanks for the PD, you're starting to get back to normal. We have our clerk working now, she's gotten a lot figured out. A lot of people have complained about having warrant blocks on their licenses, and she's finally gotten a handle on the software, getting those payments started up and taken care of. Um, I'm continuing to work with Lexicle, getting all of our policies and procedures updated. It's kind of a slow process because there's hundreds of pages to read through and verify and make sure they're all accurate. Officer Hong is doing pretty well in training. Officer Bale will be starting tomorrow. Then we also have Jeremy Jackson here, who's our other candidate for officer.
Okay.
He's looking to start here in the next couple of weeks. Um, any other questions, ma'am?
What if you know of a house and people, I know what I think, but people in and out, in and out, in and out.
Activity.
They're young children.
Activity, how's that gonna be? Is it all kids, or?
Uh, there's one adult.
Mm-hmm.
But the rest, there's about five or six kids, and it's during the night, during the day.
We can put a look into that, do you know where it's at?
Oh, yeah.
Next door to your house, okay, I've been there before.
Yeah.
Has the patrol officer been having issues there still?
I have seen him there, but I don't know if this kid's even, they're there all the time.
There are several of them that are adults, actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah, some of the kids are actually eighteen now, but there are several juvenile still there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Chief Tolliver? Okay, thank you, chief. No more updates tonight, your next week, or next time, Jared, okay? All right, moving on, second reading, ordinance zero five dash twenty-three.
An ordinance authorizing the city auditor to accept, approve, authorize, and enter into agreements to collect money for prior findings of recovery and restitution.
Any council discussion on said matter?
Yeah, again, I think that these amounts should be individualized, not just a blanket.
Individualized, what do you mean by that? Like individual amounts?
Well, yeah, I mean, each each one is a different case. And not just a big blanket over there. I'd like to know what the what the amounts are and what the actual restitution payments would be.
Okay. Any other council discussion?
Well, if if one is paid, is that kind of the four in the form of uh, ordinance? Or how does that work?
They want to make sure what the restitution is, you're talking about just in the future?
No, it's uh, it's for the special audit. So this was before the finance committee, the finance committee further sent this ordinance to you guys tonight and before. And the special audit says Brenda Anderson and some other folks like Stephanie Wilson owe the city money. One of the individuals from the special audit reached out to my office some time ago uh, and asked if she could enter into a monthly payment agreement. And under the statute, that I can tell, under our charter, I can't just tell somebody, sure, you can start paying the city monthly money, um, even if they have an order of restitution against them. So the suggestion was made, bring it before council, and uh, we brought it to finance in December, and finance has sent it to you tonight.
Okay, so Stephanie Wilson has not been making payments then?
Stephanie does make payments.
Well, there was a difference.
She was prosecuted. She has prosecution agreement with the county prosecutor.
Warranties all prosecutor ordered?
No.
They're not?
No. The restitution orders from the state come from the state auditor. Uh, they can order a finding for recovery um, with no agreement.
Still think it should be individualized.
Okay, anyone else? Motion to adopt, so moved. Second.
Um, Mr. Sherman?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
First reading. Okay. Ordinance six dash twenty-three, second reading.
Two thousand twenty-three appropriations ordinance to make appropriations for current yearly budget and expenditure for the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, for the twenty twenty-three year.
Okay, any council discussion on said matter? Any citizens' comments on it? All right, motion to adopt, so moved, second.
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance seven dash twenty-three, second reading.
An ordinance setting the authorized staff in the city departments.
Any council discussion on said matter?
Did you guys get a paper?
Any citizens' comments on it? Motion to adopt.
So moved, second.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
All right, ordinance eight dash twenty-three, one second reading.
An ordinance approving the a professional services agreement for the small cities paving project and authorizing the city manager to enter into said agreement and declaring an emergency.
Okay, any council discussion on said matter? Any citizens' comment? Motion to adopt, so moved, second.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman, uh, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have to.
Uh, motion to amend the agenda to include ordinance nine dash twenty-three and ten dash twenty-three?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
All right. Right, okay, ordinance nine dash twenty-three, need someone to introduce it, please? I'll introduce, thank you.
An ordinance approving change order one for Nelsonville Regional Collection Base Three Sewer Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Base Three Sewer Project, whereas additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas this will be change order one for this project, whereas the change will increase the contract price by twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents and is summarized as attached in exhibit one. Whereas the funds will be drawn from the contingency portion of this project in which there is enough to cover the increased price. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's fallas. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves change order one for the Nelsonville Regional Collection Base Three Sewer Project contract as described in exhibit one attached here to and incorporated into this ordinance as if rewritten fully within. The contract price will be increased by a sum of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents. The change includes the following. Core drilling a manhole to allow for two existing pipe connections totaling one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And the second is bad soil was encountered on Rory Road. An additionally excavation in stone are needed totaling twenty-three thousand three hundred and eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. City manager Tracy Galloway shall have the authority to enter into, accept, and or authorize the contract change order one for Nelsonville Regional Collection Base Three Sewer Project contract as shown in exhibit one. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law duly enacted by council on second reading, uh, sorry, on second reading, the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth day of February, two thousand three, two thousand three.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. And now we're moving on to ordinance ten dash twenty-three. Need someone to introduce it, please? I will, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the auditor to pay seventy, seven thousand five hundred dollars in the matter of DL. Whereas city auditor needs authority to pay seven thousand five hundred dollars in the matter of DL. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's fallas. The city auditor and his office shall have the authority to make the payment of seven thousand five hundred dollars in the matter of DL. This ordinance shall be in full course and effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-sixth day of February, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, we're off to our first city manager's report.
So I have been getting up to date on where current projects are in my first couple of weeks here. Um, we are also looking on getting the website updated with several updates with corrections of names and um, hours of operation and several different things like that, minor details on there. Um, also, uh, the wastewater treatment plant has been delayed again due to the switch that's still needed, uh, which has been the ongoing problem, it is still in back order. So that estimated date is now looking at early July before we have that project completed. And project work is continuing with other components as they're able, until they can get that switch in there. Um, looking at pool issues, there are some repairs that need to be done with the swimming pool. Uh, we only had one bid on the pool repairs. Uh, so we're looking, looking at funding options, and that is coming in higher than was budgeted. So looking at how else we could fund that, and whether that um, would be that we could use the Betty Johnson Fund um, for that project as well.
We will, we'll discuss that at the first meeting.
And um, also hoping to have job postings up this week for a pool manager and for lifeguards for the summer work. And also have a recommended hire of the current part-time firefighter Caleb uh, Gunterman to full-time.
Gunterman?
Gunter, she said her name, Gunterman.
Okay, uh, motion to hire Mr. Caleb Gunterman on the recommendation of Chief Barber?
Yes.
And city manager Tracy Galloway.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And we have one other recommended hire of Jeremy Jackson for a full-time police officer pending his civil service exam and at the recommendation of Police Chief as well.
Okay, motion to hire Mr. Jeremy Johnson as a full-time police officer pending his civil service passing of the test per Chief Tolliver and city manager Tracy Galloway.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Congratulations. That's all you have? All right, ma'am, thank you very much. All right, um, we're to good of the order. Mr. Coleman?
Um, yeah, have we had any letters of interest for the two seats on the council?
I have received none.
None?
I haven't.
Okay.
That's going to be.
All right. That's very disappointing. Um, so the process now is, it's been what, three weeks?
It's been three weeks. So after four, then we can appoint.
Okay.
So, but uh, I'll just say now, I'm not going to appoint anybody but that council group, so that's how that'll work, all right?
Should we consider extending the deadline, or just?
I say we should just leave it open indefinitely for right now. So until someone steps up. Um, anyone out there that has any interest in council, please submit letters of interest to either the council clerk or to me, to the president of council, our address, or email addresses or on the website. We need your help, we have two open seats. All right, anything else? That's all, yeah, Mr. Childs, he stole my thunder, there it is. He's like, sorry. Football head guy, you know. Um, I would just like to be, um, I'm thankful that Tracy Galloway has stepped up and filled the interim position, and I think she's really done a great job. She's been a calming effect on everything. I have not heard any complaints from any of the ladies, so. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sherman?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, um, we're gonna go to a short executive session here. All right, motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second. Call a room man.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Yes.